Welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. If you have a cell phone, please put it on mute or silence it and tell me your name.
Cameron.
Cameron, where do you go to school, Cameron?
Asheville Pisgah Christian School in Camber.
Okay. Cameron is going to help us lead the pledge of allegiance. This is my question. Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Cameron. Can I give a say? All right, tonight we don't have any proclamations on our agenda. We do have a consent agenda, and I want to recognize Councilman Haynes to make some remarks about item F.
So, item F reads, "A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept, if awarded, grant funding from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the purpose of reducing contamination in the recycling stream and to improve the material content."
Please.
So, as part of that, what we would be doing is we applied for grants in the fund in the amount of $30,000 for outreach efforts to reduce contamination in the recycling stream. And apparently, we are at a crisis stage in this. The outreach efforts will include radio and newspaper ads, annual mailers, brochures, magnets, and posters, in-home recycling bins, and/or standing banner displays. So, I reached out to the folks at Asheville Greenworks and just to see if they had some sort of statement they wanted to make tonight. And so, I'm just going to read that. "With a mission to inspire, equip, and mobilize individuals and communities to take care of the places we love to live, Asheville Greenworks prioritizes waste reduction and litter prevention in the city of Asheville and throughout Buncombe County. From our on-the-ground experience, we witnessed firsthand the obstacles to waste reduction in our community, such as misconceptions about what can and cannot be recycled. When items that cannot be recycled, such as plastic ... that?
Uh-oh.
Excuse me. Find my spot? Such as plastic shopping bags, paper towels, aluminum foil, and hard plastics that wind up in residential recycling bins, they can contaminate the entire load. Contamination of plastic recycling is a major issue facing recyclers across the country, as China, a country that once accepted 30% to 40% of U.S. paper, plastic, and metal recyclables, banned many types of plastic it would accept and made the standards for plastic cleanliness impossibly high. As a result of these rule changes, local recyclers are unable to sell their recyclables, and the U.S. recycling industry is at risk. Greenworks recognizes education as an essential component of reducing plastic contamination at the curb. We are working with the city of Asheville, Curbside Recycling, and Land of Sky Regional Council to conduct recycling outreach and education aimed at reducing confusion and contamination throughout the city. Funding from the NCDQ for the city to carry out more education on plastic recycling is timely and imperative to address this issue at its roots."
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I just wanted to call out a couple of things. Number one, item J, this is just everybody who loves scooters and who's emailing us asking for scooters. This is the thing where we're adding the scooters to the bike-share study so we can figure out how to have them here, how and whether and how.
Whether and how.
Whether and how. I don't know if anybody else is ... I have, I work with people who, on a daily basis, are asking me about scooters. So, this is, this is the first step in that. The second thing is, I'd like to draw your attention to item L, which is a resolution supportive statewide initiative for funding, legislative funding, state funding, to reestablish passenger rail for western North Carolina. And in just a minute, we'll have former Representative Ray Rapp come up and tell us a little bit about that. But this is incredibly exciting. This would be the first step to reestablishing passenger rail here. And as Representative Rapp will discuss, it actually starts with a bus that would run from Asheville to Salisbury to connect to the train. And that's frequently how they start. They test the waters for the likelihood of success of a train route. So, again, I'll let him say more about that, but it looks like it's, it looks like it's coming, and I hope we can, I hope we can all get on that bus so that someday, maybe we can get on that train.
Did you practice that?
I did not. I just made that up.
That's pretty good. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion on the consent agenda? And then, I'll take comment on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. If there's anyone, first, I'll recognize former Representative Ray Rapp, who is here to speak on the motion to approve the consent agenda with particularity on item L.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We are entering a new era in transportation in many ways, and we have an opportunity that has come up to, to really establish, reestablish, rather, a passenger rail connection between Asheville and the main line in Salisbury. I do want to remind you, it's been since 1975 was the last time a passenger train departed from Asheville to Salisbury. And over the years, particularly in the late '90s and early 2000, there was a concerted effort. This council was a part of that effort, led by the Asheville Chamber of Commerce, to restore passenger rail to, to the city. What came of that was a task force of the chamber that morphed into a committee that continued to meet and did work with the North Carolina Rail Division to do a number of things. For example, upgrade the depots and stations along the route between Asheville and Salisbury. You folks were beneficiaries of some of that money, and you purchased land down in Biltmore for what, at that time, was thought to be a multimodal facility that would include trains. In places such as Old Fort Marion, they upgraded their stations with the understanding that those stations, this went on in several other communities as well, Conover, Statesville, and Salisbury itself. If you've been to their depot, their station there, it's a beautiful facility. But the understanding, if you took that federal and state money, which was an 80-10-10 arrangement, that you had to use those buildings for multiple purposes, not just for transportation. Because they said, "If a train's only going to come a couple of times a day, what are you going to do with that facility the rest of the day?" But those, so you have the Marion Business Association in Marion. In Morganton, you have the, the art gallery that was created there, which led to a whole renovation of that section of town around there, which was really run down. So, a number of these upgrades took place, and that, again, was in about the period from about 2003, '04 till about 2012, '13. Well, the, the North Carolina Rail Division has been working with this committee, this chamber committee, for a number of years. Those were some concrete achievements, but the, with the goal of restoring passenger rail between Asheville and Salisbury. We got close. We got very close. In 2004, I was chairing a joint House/Senate Committee on Improving and Expanding Rail Service in North Carolina. We were on the list. And if you all remember what happened in 2004, we had that hurricane, or that flood, and $450 million in state money had to be moved to help with the flood recovery. We got things, no pun intended, back on track in 2008 and '09. I chaired another special House committee, same title. And then, the economic downturn hit, and, and we were back flat on our backs in terms of how we could move this initiative forward. So, I'll cut to the chase now. I'd love to tell you the story of it. It's been a circuitous route, unlike railroad tracks that are straight. These, this has been a curving pass, path, but we held a conference here in Asheville in 2017. Mayor Manheimer, you were gracious enough to come and welcome the folks there. There were about 175 folks, economic development people, railroad people, folks that told us what we needed to hear if we wanted to have this service restored. Out of that conference, we reconstituted this Western North Carolina Rail Committee, incorporated it, and we have three FOCI. And I think you need to hear this because, number one, we understand that we're never going to have passenger rail unless we have viable freight service to and through the region. So, the first priority of the Western North Carolina Rail Committee, as duly reconstituted, is to improve and expand freight rail traffic in western North Carolina. The second focus is on excursion and tourist trains, and the Great Smoky Mountain Railway is an example of it. And the economic impact of that in the far western part of the state is dramatic and real. Just up here in Woodfin, you've got the new little Craggy Mountain Line that is, is getting started, and Rocky Hallifield and his, his folks are working with that. That, we're trying to encourage that service as well. And then, third, not first anymore, but third, is reestablish a passenger rail connection between Asheville and the main line in Salisbury. We have a chance to do this, folks, because Amtrak finally has come to the table after years of telling us they were not interested. And I'll give you one quick story. I met with Joe Boardman, who was, while I was still chairing this House Select Committee. He was doing a tour of the Amtrak system. He was president of it. We met in Raleigh. And I presented him data that had been done by a study that you helped fund in 2000 and 2001 by the Babcock School at Wake Forest University. And the projection was, if we had passenger rail service between Asheville and Salisbury, we'd generate about 72,000 riders a year. And I, I was all pumped up telling him these figures, thinking that this was, he would be impressed by this. I also told him what the Chamber of Commerce had preached all these years, Asheville is the most frequently requested destination of, unserved by Amtrak to its agents. Well, he started with a second observation first. He said, "Our data doesn't show that." I was a little bit crestfallen, but I was really crestfallen when he said, "When you can get a number that approaches 240,000 passengers a year to Asheville and from Asheville, we'll talk." Well, that kind of brought a conclusion to our conversation. And since then, Amtrak has been very standoffish. Until two years ago, the time that we did this conference here in Asheville, they are now in negotiations with the North Carolina Department of Transportation Rail Division and with the Western North Carolina Rail Committee to launch Amtrak through a bus service between Asheville and Salisbury. I'm working with the legislature now with Chairman Torbit, who is Chair of Transportation Appropriations, to provide $890,000, which is what we have to put in escrow, so that Amtrak can draw down this money to subsidize the service between Asheville and Salisbury for two years, trial-two-year period. Funding would be supplied by the, again, by the North Carolina Legislature if we get it through this current budget cycle. I think it's important for you to hear some, just three numbers. You already heard what we projected as ridership if we had regular rail service. We had two studies done, the most recent one updated two months ago by the Rail Division. How many people would ride between Asheville and Salisbury to make connections to Raleigh, onto New York, different connections along the main line? The Rail Division came up with a number, if bus service were, if this Amtrak bus service were available, of 13,000 riders. I said, "Well, that's, that's not a bad number." Then, we went back and talked to Amtrak. They ran their own numbers. The numbers they came up with were, you'll only have 2,100 riders a year if this service is implemented. I was a little bit crestfallen until I said to them, "So, the money you're requesting to subsidize this service is $800,000. That's right. Now, what happens if the Rail Division ... Let's, let's split the difference between the Rail Division's projections of 13,000, your projections of 2,100. Let's just say 6,000. Can a portion of that fare box from the additional riders above 2,100 be used against what we have to put in the escrow account?" They said, "Of course." This is making it much easier with me, for me, dealing with the legislature, because we're going to ask for the full $890,000, but with the understanding, if the ridership is, you know, is above the $2,100, which, or 2,100 riders Amtrak is projecting, significant amount of that will be paid for by the riders themselves. Members, we have a very unique opportunity in getting this done right now, because Amtrak's administration changes rather regularly. And when it changes, their priorities change. I was surprised when they were so open. They initially contacted us and talked to the Rail Division about this. This has not happened. This has not happened. But they see us as a feeder for their, for their trains going to and through Salisbury. So, with that, I hope that you'll be able to endorse this resolution. We're asking all the communities on what's known as Norfolk Southern S-line, in between Asheville and Salisbury, to pass a similar resolution so we can carry this to the legislature and say, "We have the local support to do this." And Mayor, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to entertain.
Questions? Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I can, I just, I think this is really exciting. I can see your excitement in explaining it. And as someone who rode Amtrak very frequently during my college years, all four years, from North Carolina to Virginia, it was a very economical way for me to travel back and forth to home. And I've always inquired about, how do we get passenger rail service back to this area? And this seems like the first step, and I'm very excited. I'm going to support it. I think everybody else is, since it's on the consent agenda. And I look forward to seeing what happens when you go to the legislature and request the money and what comes from the ridership, and hopefully, it's above and beyond what it needs to be, and we can move to further steps of reestablishing that passenger rail service here. This is exciting. I like, love it.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come explain the history to us.
Thank you. And I'll thank Councilwoman Mayfield for meeting with me and going through all of this. She spent two hours, and we went way, we dug much deeper into this than what we did here tonight. Jill, thank you for that as well. Thank you all.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, if not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Esther, can I say one thing, just since she is in the room and I'm now seeing her? When I met with Ray, one of the things that he repeatedly said was, or offered, was praise for Stacy Merton, who serves on this rail committee on behalf of the city of Asheville. So, just wanted to call that, your kudos to you in, in the wide world of the public arena.
We are going to move on to the only public hearing we have on our agenda, but first, let me just mention, under New Business, we have a resolution adopting a down payment assistance policy that is on the printed agenda and was noticed for this evening. I just want to let everyone know that item is going to be moved to February 26, our February 26 meeting, which is our next meeting. The, the staff is making some adjustments, technical in nature, to the language in the proposed policy, so that it's a little easier to understand and implement. But the overall intent, the idea behind the down payment assistance program isn't changing at all. This is much more of an internal administrative process. So, that necessitated us moving that item to the next, next agenda. I just wanted to let anyone know who might be here for that item, which is item A under New Business. We have one public hearing item here. Jessica Bernstein is going to, from Planning, will present it to us. This is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the conditions of ordinance number 4722 for the conditional zoning of property located at 275 and 281 Hazel Mill Road. We're going to, like, set a record for how many times we do this project.
This may be the last. Thanks, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. This is an amendment to a wording correction. This is not, we're not reopening the project. Once again, you reviewed this project, you approved this conditional zoning back on January 8th to the site known as White Oak Grove at 275 Hazel Mill Road. I put the project site up just to remind you all. When we talked about this project at the January 8th meeting, we had a lot of discussion regarding the sidewalk. The developer was proposing for the sidewalk along Hazel Mill Road to be set back from the street, and we, you know, clearly described that as the developer's intent. You all approved the project with that sidewalk. We had the wording just not entirely correct in the conditions. So, this is a quick revisit to just make sure that the wording is, is very clear to council, to the developer, and to the public. So, as you can see in condition number 10, as the second sentence begins, "The sidewalk along Hazel Mill Road will be eight feet in width and set back up to 35 feet from the edge of the road, as shown on the site plan attached. An easement will be granted by the developer slash property owner to the city for public use of the sidewalk, but the sidewalk will be privately maintained." So, this is just to clarify, that's the intent. This is the wording that is meant to be approved. That concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I will move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning amendment to ordinance 4722 for White Oak Grove Apartments at 275 and 281 Hazel Mill Road from residential multifamily high-density district conditional zone to residential multifamily high-density conditional zone with a corrected condition regarding the sidewalk, condition 10, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in that, one, the amendment does not substantially deviate from the project details previously approved, other than the changes in the site plan. Two, the development is located with close access to commercial uses, transit, and employment opportunities. Three, the project includes dedicated affordable residential units. And four, the proposal is aligned with the future land use map in the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. I'm going to hand it over to the Vice Mayor for our boards and commissions.
Thank you. Once again, unfortunately, we did not get any applications for the Board of Electrical Examiners, but we are still, so we will have to re-advertise that, but we, we have some ideas. For the Citizens Police Advisory Committee, the Boards and Commissions Committee would recommend the south seat to be filled by Karen McNulty.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And for the Sustainability Advisory Committee, once again, we had a lot of great applicants, and we only had one open seat, so we had to have a tough, tough decision here. But the Boards and Commission Committee would recommend Chris Pellrime for that.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, it's a pretty short agenda tonight. I have some people that are signed up to speak during public comment. So, the way that works is, I'll call the folks that have signed up. If you haven't signed up, that's okay. I'll, I'll get to people who haven't signed up after I go through these that have signed up. You'll have three minutes to speak. Just watch the lights on the lectern and begin by stating your name. I do want to take a moment before we begin public comment by addressing the Vance Elementary softball field. For those of you who are not here for this item, just lay along. Okay.
Uh-huh.
So, the, so, in the last week, the city council has learned that one of the bond projects from our Parks and Rec Bond would go to help co-fund the softball field improvements at Vance Elementary. This is a project in partnership with the school system, so this is city, this is land that is owned and run by the school, but there are opportunities occasionally for the city to partner with the school system to make improvements or maintain recreational facilities so that we can co-use them. This field is used by the Asheville High School Softball Girls Team. This is where they practice, so, but it, but it is obviously part of Vance Elementary's campus. So, we got a lot of emails and concern about this. The way this partnership is proposed to work is that the city would be the one that would actually manage the construction contract. So, we were sent this drawing, this is not a city-created drawing, we were sent this drawing to show where the current outfield fence is, which is that green line, and where the proposed outfield fence is, which is that purple line, and then, proposed baseline fences, which are also in purple. So, we've, we've done a lot of fact-finding in the last week, and we, a lot of us have had opportunities to talk with our Parks and Rec Department and our manager and to the superintendent. And so, here's how, how we think this run-of-show will work. On Monday, the school board is having their regular meeting. They're inviting members of the community, the Vance community, to come and speak at the school board meeting. We will have the Parks and Rec Director, Roderick Simmons, at that meeting also to help answer questions and provide information. We have also talked with the school, the superintendent, about hosting a, an evening meeting at Vance Elementary for community members to come and talk with our staff about the proposal and give any feedback to, to the staff. The project is not finalized. This is really kind of a rough draft right now. The contractor has not been selected. So, we don't yet have a date for that community meeting, but we hope to have one. The city manager will work with the superintendent and the Parks and Rec Department to come up with a date before the Monday school board meeting, so that we can make that date known to the community. And that's where it's at right now. I do know that, I have learned that the proposed location for the outfield fence is the distance it is because that apparently makes it usable for, for the city's recreation, recreational purposes, I guess for adult league sports. And that is one reason why the city would be able to partner on this project. Otherwise, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for the city to partner on the project. And, and I've also learned from, it went away, but maybe it's coming back, I don't know. I've also learned that the city has agreed that the baseline fencing that runs from the first baseline will actually stop at the first sidewalk and be open, and that they will move the, you can sort of see where the soccer field is right there. They will move the soccer field into the infield area so that, that is still something that kids can use. So, I hope that helps provide a little bit of information. We, you know, we, as a city, committed to a community-oriented process for all of our bond funding. I, I think that this one was a little bit unusual for us, because it is a partnership program with the school system, and it's being built on school grounds. So, we're, you know, we're, work with us, we're getting this process down to make sure we're, we're hearing from the community and that everyone's at the table as we move forward. Okay, so, I hope that was helpful. I recognize that not everyone here wants to talk about this project, so the powers that be that are watching us downstairs can take that off the screen. Okay, the first person I have signed up to speak is, I'm talking to Dan. He's very, good job, Dan.
Except that it was Maggie.
Oh, it was Maggie. Thanks, Maggie. Okay. The first person signed up to speak is Tracy Wold. I think I was saying that right. Well, you'll tell us how it was named. Tracy, can you say your last name for us?
Sure, Tracy Wold.
Wold.
Thank you very much for listening.
I just came here, I've been a four-and-a-half-year transit rider out of necessity. And I actually like our system, but I've learned a lot, and it does have its limitations, of course. We're very excited about the Transit Master Plan coming into play and the new electric buses. And I just wanted to come and reinforce, you know, that hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent developing the Transit Master Plan. It's a very worthwhile investment. We just want to make sure that it gets implemented because it seems like things just get sort of shoved to the side. So, it needs to have some focus to make sure that the charging equipment for the new buses is in place, drivers trained, the new route pamphlets are printed, the new routes themselves are implemented, and all of that leading up to an improved on-time performance. That's sort of the, the whole point. Also, the improvements to the art station, especially the restrooms and the digital sign would be greatly appreciated. Transit, public transit, I feel, is the lifeblood of a successful city. Now, we're not a large city, but many other cities flourish because people can use it effectively to get to work, to enjoy all of the elements of the cities such as Chicago or Atlanta, other areas that, you know, people are able to not have vehicles and actually use it effectively as a major transportation option. And it can help alleviate some of your headaches as well. If our transit is running properly, it reduces the traffic congestion, reduce the demand for parking, assist with housing affordability because if you do not have to expel your budget on a car, you have more to afford for your housing expenses. It's also very important for seniors and for young people to have that option before they either acquire a car or if they're not able to use one. And I feel, if you build it, they will come. Right now, the ridership is iffy because we can't really depend necessarily on the transit being on time and due to the aging fleet. And we're hoping with the implementation of the new buses, that will help tremendously. But as soon as that happens, people can see that they can actually rely on the bus to get where they need to go. That's been a problem up until now, but hopefully, that'll help resolve it. And funding, of course, is always an issue. So, we'd like to see that become a priority.
We've got your hand up.
Great, thank you very much.
I have signed up to speak, a Vance Elementary parent team. So, maybe you guys know who that is.
Hi there.
Here, stand in the, you find out, we try to trick.
Okay. There was an official statement developed by the parent team, which I think you've really nicely addressed. As I've been thinking about this, there are a few other things I really wanted to add personally, which I think fits in the time. Is it, is it okay for me to do that?
Yep, just state your name.
Okay, so, my name's Timothy Polton. And to me, this relates closely to the city's desire to partner with the schools on closing our achievement gap. And I'd like to sort of explain why that is. And just to give you a little background, that, you know, I'm not just a parent angry about a field. I'll give you a little background about myself. So, I'm a parent of a first grader at Vance, and my four-year-old will be there for kindergarten next year. And we're excited about the school. We love the school. I'm a family medicine doctor. I work for Appalachian Mount Community Health Centers, which is a federally qualified health center. So, working to address healthcare disparities, provide healthcare for all. My wife, who's working tonight, unable to be here, is also a family medicine doctor and MAHEC faculty. She's participated through the Racial Equity Institute here in Asheville, active with the VIPA, working to get that curriculum in with the residency. So, these, these types of things are really exciting to us. We're excited for the city to partner with the schools. We have, both have moms who spent careers in public education. We benefited from public education, so we've been really excited about that. What I'm concerned is seeing a pattern, perhaps, of approach to communication that isn't going to be optimal in trying to close those gaps. So, I went last year to a presentation at Vance on how can we address these achievement gaps. They presented it really well, the problem. It was striking. But what was a difficult thing for me is they, it seemed to be presented as, what are we going to need to take away from the high-achieving students in order to help the low-achieving students? Sort of a win-lose. And I've seen that pattern with this, with the field. We've heard almost nothing back from the superintendent or the school board about our concerns of this being presented as, well, we need to do this for Title IX, so the Vance students may need to suffer. So, to the extent that the city is able to partner with the school district on that, I would really hope that we would encourage the kind of communication that will engage everyone to be excited about this. I don't believe that any of these are win-loss proposals or zero-sum games. I'm really excited to make these changes. I think the Vance parent team is excited to make these changes. And I think the frustration is probably, at this point, more about the perceived indifference or ignoring of the engaged and focused people with impact as anything else. So, I know that's not exactly where you sit in the middle of that, but to the extent to which there can be a partnership, I would hope you would encourage that collaboration and communication. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Lee Cowart.
Hello. Hello. My name is Lee Cowart. I'm here today to ask you to fight Raleigh's plan to gerrymander Asheville. Manipulating the boundaries of an electoral constituency to favor a specific party is an egregious practice. And especially given, and this has been alarming to witness your enaction on SB 813, especially given that 75% of your constituents voted against the gerrymandered redistricting in the referendum. All of you are on record opposing this change. The people have spoken, and I, we would like for you to fight this before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince, last name starts with a P, rather, maybe? Prester, oh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting your name. Could you repeat it again?
The Vince, the priest. I don't know where to begin. I heard a lot of good things, but y'all guys got going on, and I really appreciate that. But this is my first meeting coming here, and it took me a long time to, you know, man up, to be able to come here, listen at some different key factors. But the reason why I'm here is because, you know, our city, you know. First, I wanted to start about how to, you know, adjust the crime rate, how to adjust, you know, homeless, you know, how to bill up, you know, our city before we decided to bring, you know, tours, tours in. I moved here like, in 2005, you know, from California. And, you know, it just, I'm at this point that, yeah, I'm very emotional. You know, my daughter's here, you know. Now, I'm here because I moved from, you know, Calabasas to here. And just looking at all the different things that people talks about and, you know, trying to establish from Asheville, which is train route, which is trash. There's not one time that I heard about somebody said about billing up, you know, the housing authorities. The housing authority is a very key factor in Bunkham County. Since I've been here, since 2005 to 2019, there's nothing to say about Asheville Housing Authority. You know, all these killings going on, all these drugs coming through the city, and the fact that it's nothing that's been talked about. When is we going to work together as a team? Just like people were saying about Tom Brady. Tom Brady can't do this, Tom Brady can't do that. But each and every day that I have to wake up, work nine-to-five, nine-to-five, you know, I'm doing this for my daughter. Only thing I'm asking y'all guys is, stop wasting time on trains that is never going to be accepted here in Asheville. Asheville is a small city. It's not going to work, it's never going. Because the fact that, that's why, you've got to look at the population. The population is not that big. It's not that big. Only thing I'm saying is that, make a change before you make a decisions. A big hotel that is supposed to be building, several hotels here in Bunkham County that never should have supposed to be existed. If you're going to build Asheville up, build it up. When you build it up, when you want to make a sacrifice. You make a sacrifice when you actually stop doing, you know, good deeds. Reach out to the public. This, this is our mayor. Our mayor is the face of our franchise, just like Tom Brady. Everybody say, oh, Tom Brady this, Tom Brady that. I was so excited. You know, I was so angry because out of 32 teams, 32 teams, they never gave that man a chance, never. So, I'm asking y'all guys, and I ask you mayor, to give Asheville a chance. Because you've got to think about it. Yeah, this might sound crazy, but the year 2089 come, people going to be talking about you. Not nothingness, not no schools, anything. That's the one thing I want to share. Y'all, y'all guys think about that.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
Thanks. The next person I have signed up to speak is Sarah Monroe.
Hello. My name is Sarah Monroe. My son is a kindergartner at Haw Creek Elementary School, where they have just installed full-time armed officers, just patrolling the school for no apparent reason. I-
Haw Creek.
Haw Creek Elementary School. I'm sorry, what was that?
I was just asking what, what-
The principal told me they're installing them in all of the city's schools. So, it doesn't matter. But I spoke to the principal about how deeply disturbed I was by normalizing this kind of culture in my child's school. And so, he brought the officer to a meeting where I expressed that concern again. And she said that that's actually their job. They're there to normalize cops and officers and guns in schools because cops have a bad reputation, which I think is a disgusting allocation of resources. And I went on to say that I was disturbed about no parents being notified. There was no discussion at all of this, at all. And I said I was concerned about how people, like, parents of color might feel bringing their kids to school here with this armed officer in the entryway, just hanging out with our kids. She said that she doesn't see color. And then, a parent of a biracial child spoke up about the disparity in discipline in our schools. And she said that she thinks that black children just misbehave more and black people commit more crimes in front of the principal. And nothing was done. I brought this to the PTA, nothing was done, and I am enraged.
What school was this?
Haw Creek.
So, Haw Creek is in the county system.
Okay.
And we, we appoint the school board to the Asheville City School System.
Okay.
And actually, this is an issue we've been looking at with regard to city schools under our, in connection. We just had a joint meeting with the Asheville-
She's in the Asheville Police Department. Her name is Sharon Archer.
It's not, I mean, we can-
She's just an openly racist officer in the schools with a gun, is my concern.
Okay, we'll look at it. And maybe there's a staffing that we, I didn't know about with the SRO.
Thank you.
She's, she, where the, the staff's, oh, she's, she works in the Sheriff's Department. Okay.
Right.
That was good. All right.
So, just, I mean, if you, if you haven't gone to the county, you should go to the county.
Right, so, you just mentioned that, we just determined the employee you mentioned works in the Sheriff's Department. And that's, would be with the Bunkham County School Systems and their, their officers in schools.
The principal told me you're heading with all the schools.
I'm, I'm just telling you, if you, if, just in terms for your, for, just to help you in terms of who to communicate with, it would be the county commissioners and the county school board and the Bunkham County Sheriff's Department.
No.
Okay, good. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak tonight, but is there anyone who hasn't already spoken during public comment? This would be your opportunity. Just raise your hand. Okay, we do have a closed session tonight, so Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Smith is going to read the motion.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: To prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina are not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statute. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31810A3. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A1. To consult with the attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including, but not limited to, lawsuit or potential lawsuit, statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A3. To consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and condition of appointment of individual public officer or employee, statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A6. And to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168 through 168, the Personnel Privacy Act.
Second. Wait, are you not?
No.
You're not, you're not. Well, you looked up so, so satisfied.
I came to agree.
Sorry about that. Sorry.
Finally. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A1.
Second.
Sorry about that.
That was a long one. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will adjourn from the closed session.